All right, Gary, you want me to kick it off or you doing it?
Go ahead.
All right, fantastic. So if we're ready to go?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. This Board of Work session and budget hearing of the Board of Education for May 1st, 2024. All items being considered this evening are posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. This meeting is being streamed live on PPTV Services website and on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. So please check the district website for replay times. Before we get started, I'd like to state, one, thank you to the people at McDaniel's for opening up your beautiful space to us. This is literally the University of McDaniel's. It's quite awesome. So I want to say thank you to all of you for that and sorry that I couldn't be there. I also want to share a few reminders and in order to sort of keep and ensure safety, we're asking that everyone find a seat. I'm not there, so I'm presuming that everyone has found their seats well and that you also keep the walkways clear. I ask you to be considerate to the people around you and that you try to keep all signs below chin level. We'd also like to ask that you don't hang or attach signs or banners or posters to any objects in the room or on walls. Additionally, I would like to emphasize that our primary objective this evening is to hear from the feedback about the budget and to engage in community discussion. If we cannot conduct our business in this room, then we'll need to pause the meeting and move to a different location, which is not what we, something that we want to do. That action would have a detrimental effect on all of those who came to here with the intention of participating in this public forum. We also have interpreters with us this evening and if those interpreters are here, I'd like to ask that they stand and come forward and take a moment to introduce themselves along with the language that they'll be interpreting from and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should they need their assistance. And I'll pause for a moment to give people an opportunity to come forward.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Fabio, Spanish interpreter, and I believe we're going to be in the corner for anybody that needs us and there's multiple languages.
Hello, everybody. I'm a Twista fam Vietnamese interpreter. We will be in the corner right here. Anybody need assistance, just come forward. Okay, thank you.
Larys Adorov, Russian interpreter, same place. Hello, everyone. This is Anastasia, Russian interpreter here, same place as everyone.
Good evening. My name is Peshar Noor. I'm Somali interpreter for this event today. I will be sitting in the corner there if my service needed.
Hi, my name is Amal. I'm an interpreter in Somali and if somebody needed, we can grab that corner.
My name is Yilang, Chinese Mandarin interpreter.
Hello, my name is Yan from Passport to Language. I speak Mandarin. If anybody needed me, I'll be sitting in the back.
That was it, Herman?
Wonderful. I want to take a moment just to say thank you to all the interpreters who came out tonight to translate. This is one of those things that is absolutely important that we get it to everybody that needs to hear it so that there, anyone who has questions or anyone who has something that they would like to say that they have the opportunity to do so. So thank you to all the interpreters in the room for coming out tonight. I also want to note that we have childcare available this evening in Room 189. Again, that's childcare is available in Room 189. So if you need help locating that room, then please check in with either Ms. Roseanne, our board manager, who's somewhere in that building. But if you, Roseanne, if you can wave to the people so they know who you are, I'm presuming that she's waving. She's waving. There she is. All right. Thank you, Ms. Patty, for pointing. And then, and she can direct you to the right location. All right. So now, the Board is now convened as a Budget Committee. The purpose of tonight is to hear public comment on the proposed budget and to have an opportunity to ask questions and request further clarification on the proposed budget. Again, that's the proposed budget. Before we move on to public comment, I've asked our interim superintendent, Dr. Huss, to share a high-level overview of the budget proposal for the 24-25 school year. Dr. Huss, could you take it from here, please?
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Vice Chair Green, excuse me. This is the same presentation that I did at the Board meeting last Wednesday. I will go over it again for the audience and for those that may be watching from home. This is a presentation on the 2024 proposed budget, some of the challenges, some of the resilience that we have in this great community and some of the achievements. So I want to make a few comments at first about my observations about this school district. I think Portland Public Schools is a remarkable school district. Many of you know I've been a superintendent for 18 years in three different states, so I have a pretty good history of comparing and contrasting. Not only is there a wealth of talent in the district and in the community, the community has a very strong commitment to a robust curriculum and many program offerings in arts, culture, music, dual language, athletics, advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and I'm sure there's many other resources I've not mentioned. The district has weathered historic challenges this year and yet I still see staff coming in strong and smiling and working. I see parents delivering their students to school and I see our students showing up eager to learn. So we're going to talk about how we move forward together. One thing we want to do is to build on the strengths of the community. We really hope to unite around a vision for Portland Public, where we want to be into the future and lean on each other for solving problems and getting to that vision together. We also hope, and we already started, in organizing with other school districts in the state to talk about the statewide vision and organized effort and advocacy of funding for public K-12 education. As we worked through this budget, we had two guiding principles. One was to try to minimize the impact to students. I want to emphasize try to minimize the impact to students because we know anytime we're reducing in costs and expenditures and we're still trying to offer the same services, resources are going to be stretched, employees are going to be impacted, but our goal is to continue offering programs to students. We also have a commitment to continuing the initiatives that are showing the significant beginning gains in academic achievement and the continued focus on a high graduation rate for Portland Public Schools. And I'll reference what some of those initiatives are later. To get into some of the budget context, I want to just do a brief summary of the financial pressures that created the shortfall that we're currently in. One is that we've got rising costs around goods and services. We've also done a significant contribution to employees' compensation and benefits and teacher planning time. We're all pleased that we did this. It was a little rocky getting there, but we know that when we have a quality workforce, we have a good way of supporting students and families and that's very important to us. And even though we had extra funding from the pandemic, the COVID relief money that came to us from the feds, federal government, those monies are ending and yet the student needs have continued. We had quite a bit of academic loss. There were mental health needs. There were social emotional needs. So we need to continue to support those students even though the federal funds will be gone. We also believe that we have limited revenue in our state dollars. There's been quite a bit of historical activity of to raise the per pupil funding for students and districts in the state, but things have changed and we believe that there still needs to be more work at the state level. Then the third impact is we have declining enrollment. We have fewer number of students every year. That's happening across the state and in a lot of regions in the U.S. And our funding is dependent on how many students we have and yet we're continuing to have the same number of schools, the same number of facilities that we're running. So our student enrollment has been declining at some years as much as 9.5% faster and Oregon's is on a pretty much 6% decline. Anytime you have declining enrollment, you're already having a reduction in revenue. It's just the way we're funding the school districts. This next picture is a graph of what those enrollment trends look like and you can see pretty much from 1920 and forward, it's continued to go down. With different bracket information you have just based on birth date, the age of the children that are currently in the Portland system, this could continue for at least nine years. So we need to prepare for that. So unfortunately, what it means for general fund reductions for 24-25 school year is that we will have a gap where our revenues do not meet our expenditures, which means we need to reduce $30 million in expenditures for the next school year. What we will see presented this evening is that we're proposing 14.2%, excuse me, no, 14.2 million from school-based budgets and 15.7 million are from central budgets. And I'll explain why central budget is just here. The next slide is to show you that you'll see some headlines that are coming up on this slide. These are from various newspapers across Oregon. And basically it's showing you that this is not just a PPS problem. You have heard recently that Salem Kaiser is probably impacted heavily. They're looking at about a 400 staff person reduction. Those are hard things to work through. These were all headlines and if you look at the next slide, you'll see some examples of school districts and the challenges they face as well. I mentioned Salem Kaiser by Greensport, which is a much smaller district. Your small ones, very hard ones, more of those reductions. They're actually already in such a tough spot that they're reducing the school year by eight days and starting to fill in the gap. That means you're pretty much up against a wall in terms of finance options. You might say, well, why would we care about those other districts if we're here in Portland Public? And I would say because when we form coalitions and when we understand what's going on around the state, it gives us a stronger message at the legislative level and it helps us help our communities understand that we do care about this. We don't want to make these cuts, but we do have to find solutions together. I'll now go into some of the things that we're proud that we're going to be able to keep for the next school year. One is while we will see a slight increase in class size, and these are averages, I really want to emphasize they're averages. Students don't come to us in bundles of 1 to 25 and so we staff on averages, but we know sometimes class sizes are lower than the average and sometimes they're higher. But this proposed budget is looking at an increase of about one in the averages at the elementary level. So in general, this will keep class size to where they were in about 2021, '22. We would rather them stay lower, but that's where we are. This chart, which I know if you're in the room tonight, it'll be a little challenging to see, but you can pull it up online. It looks like a little bit like Lego blocks to me, but basically what it's trying to show you that even though the average is there in the middle where the blocks look the highest, we will have some classes with some grade levels that could be as high as 33, 34 students and some that are as low as nine or 10 students. When they're that high, we do have a small amount of funds that the school office can use to see if we've got enough FTE to provide some relief either with an additional teacher, a halftime teacher, or maybe some instructional assistance. That process starts in the spring and will go through the fall as we see where the students show up. We're also continuing to maintain our efforts in key initiatives that are showing that our reading and our math and our writing scores are back up. They took a hard hit in the pandemic and we are moving back up to pre-pandemic levels in terms of academic achievement. We have a long way to go. We don't want to just be where we were pre-pandemic. We want to be much higher than that and we want to see the gap between disaggregated groups of students so that that gap is being closed and everyone's racing towards the top. But some of the initiatives that we will be sustaining are school-based instructional coaches, targeted student instruction from academic interventionists, looking at how we continue to support middle grades experiences. Transitions are hard on students, particularly transition from elementary to middle school and then middle school to high school. Our athletic programs bring great pride around being in school and what kids can do when they're being physically active, but it also helps develop them as a whole, a whole student, a whole child. And having strong academics and them being able to compete athletically is very important to young people. We have many great career tech offerings. Those will continue. We will still have rapid response team for behavioral, mental health support. We will have summer programming, credit recovery. We did not get some of the funding we were hoping to receive that the state had, but we still will have some for summer programming. And we will still have social emotional instruction and school psychologist staffing. These next two slides are very painful because now we're actually talking about positions. FTE, which stands for full-time equivalent. So if we say that there are 67 FTE, that means 67 and a half teachers, licensed educators, somewhere whether they're assigned to a classroom, that we will have fewer of if this proposed budget is accepted. And then you can see the dollar amounts next to those. Reducing those number of FTE gains us about 9.5 million in savings. That doesn't mean those individuals necessarily are all losing their job. They may not have the current assignment. Human resources will work very carefully with our labor partners and with individuals themselves to say, if you don't have this assignment, let's look at your credentials, what else are you able to instruct in? Where do we have openings? Where would you be interested in working? And see how many of those people that we can get placed before we have to let people know that we don't have enough openings anymore. You'll see that this list, after you look at non-licensed staff administrators, comes to about 97 people or FTE, which is about the 14.2 million that I showed you on the opening reduction in expenditures. The next one is central office or centrally budgeted service reductions. First thing we did is we stopped some spending in purchase services and supplies. That's about 2.6 million. We also looked at reducing custodial and security people. These are folks that are assigned to schools, but they are centrally budgeted and that totals about 13 and a half people, which is another about a million dollars. And then the very top category is we reduced the number of administrators. We reduced the number of licensed educators. We have licensed educators that serve great purpose and do great work at the central office, but they're also qualified to instruct in schools and so we're making some adjustments there. And then we have some non-licensed staff. That reduction is about almost 40 people. So this is where you get 107 and a half reduction in FTE and 15.7 million in central savings. This next chart is simply combining those two charts and showing how we get to the 30 million deficit that we had this year. There's always a lot of conversation in school districts and other government agencies about reserve and I want to do just a quick little explanation of this because you actually do it when you're running your own household budgets. You just don't call it a reserve. So I'm going to give you an example that hopefully will make sense. What this chart shows you is while Portland Public has been fortunate enough to have a reserve, that reserve has been used over the last two years. So we didn't have to go as deep in terms of personnel or other spending reductions, but there's not enough money there. And so if we spent that reserve all the way down right now, like 5% for this district would be, I think it's like a couple of months and then we would be totally out of money. So that's a hard concept to get, so I hope you don't mind, but I asked the team to put together a simpler explanation that I think hopefully helps people understand what we're talking about. So I used $100,000 and I want to recognize a lot of people don't make $100,000, but I picked it honestly because it makes the math easy. So if you had a household that was fortunate enough that you made, you and your partner or whoever lives in the household that's earning income, that you had $100,000 a year for income, that's all your income that you have for your expenditures, your rent, your mortgage, your food, whatever it is. And you had, you are lucky enough to have $10,000 in your savings account. You then have a $10,000 reserve. You have a 10% reserve in case your car breaks down, your hot water heater goes out, your child needs something desperately, like new shoes or more tuition or whatever it is. So you've predicted your expenses for the year are 103,000 and your revenue is only 100. So you decide that you're going to take $3,000 out of your savings account so that you have enough to get through the year. That means at the end of that year, you have $7,000 left in your savings account. In school districts, we call that a reserve or a beginning fund balance and an ending fund balance. At the year, if you have an ending fund balance at 7,000, next year it's a beginning fund balance of 7,000, just like your savings account. So in the second year example, and that's the year that we're projecting for next school year, you again only make $100,000. You're going to tighten the belt a little bit. Maybe you're not going to eat out at all. Maybe you've already given up your vacation. You're not going to go to the movies. So now you're going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to see if I can keep expenditures to 102,000. You're going to take another 2,000 out of your savings account. You're going to end that year at 5,000. That's 5%. So by the time we get to 2025, '26, this district most likely will be at the 5% bottom of where you want your savings account to be or where you want your reserves to be. 5% is not best practice, but it's kind of a cautionary of not going below that. So I use this simple example because when you hear that a school district of this size has a 40 or a 50 billion or a 55 or a 60 million dollar reserve, the question is, what is the percentage compared to the overall operating cost? And I hope when I show you the next slide, which is the same example, this one is just taking the same concepts from that other chart and it is putting it into real dollars for the school district. And so you will see that in 2023, 2024, the beginning fund balance was 105 million. We used 21 million of reserve and so by the end of the year, we were at 84 million. And this is where it gets hard for me to wrap my head around because if somebody said even 40 million, you got $40 million, I think, whoa, I don't have any problems as a person, right? As an individual, I'm always going to have as much money as I ever need. But in a school district this size, when we get to 40 million, we're at 5%. And that's like having $5,000 in your savings account. So that's the purpose of showing you this. I have been doing this long enough that I know understanding the reserve situation really helps people try to have a dialogue about, these are tough decisions. None of us want to be making these. None of us want to be in this situation, but the reserve is not going to get us out of this particular situation that we're currently in. We're still using some of it, but it will not solve the whole issue. This last slide here is to give you a little bit of a peek at the calendar. Next week, we have a Budget Committee Report presentation and a Board Work Session. That's on May 7th. We're still looking at adding potentially another option of a public meeting in between the 7th and the 21st. Budget approval comes on the 21st and then there's still one last official hearing at the county something office, Liz, if you can tell me what's the name, the TSCC again? It's a county approval that has to happen. I didn't mean to put you on.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay. The Tax Authority at the county office. It's not one I had to do in Salem, so I apologize. I don't have that memorized. And that is officially when the budget adoption is done. Go ahead.
It's the tax supervising and conservation conditions.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot. So the budget is not adopted officially until the 11th. So this is an opportunity for folks to speak to the Board and to the public. I think Chair, I mean not Chair, Director Brim Edwards, are you going to facilitate this portion?
That's for me. So yes, she is, but it would be awkward for her to just start talking and no one explained, explain what is going on. That's weird. So with that being said, I want to thank interim superintendent, Dr. Huss, for sharing all that she did. I will say that from the community members that I've been able to speak to about the household size, although everyone is very, very grateful that you are projecting $100,000 a year out there, they are, they are very grateful for that and they're accepting that they're going to get to that point. But it also, from the people that I talked to said, it helped them to make practical sense of it because you get lost in the millions. So I wanted to say thank you for breaking that down like that because it helped people to really, to really get a grasp on exactly what it is we're talking about. And again, once it makes practical sense to people, then they start saying, well, are we sure that 40 million is enough for a couple of months? It seems like it should be less than that. And then I say, you're absolutely right. So in any case, thank you for that. With that being said, we're now getting ready to go into the public comment section and we're going to be asking that you again, speak clearly, speak into the mic and do all that. I'm going to turn this over to my Board colleague, Director Brim Edwards, and she will facilitate the rest of the meeting from here and I will sit on and look at all of your lovely faces.
Great, thanks.
Y'all should have been smiling at that point. I don't get it. I don't get it at all.
Thanks, Vice Chair Green. So next we're going to turn to public comment on the 2024-25 proposed budget. Before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. First, the Board, thanks, everyone who came tonight to attend the meeting and provide your comments. We have planned public comment until 8:00, but we may not need that depending on the number of people who are signed up. And from there, we'll then move to the Board Discussion, an opportunity for both further Board Discussion, more questions if people have them and just ask clarifying questions or make statements. And then we were going to do it by school community, but I don't think that's necessary, it sounds like. So I'm, before I say that, I'm just going to go into the normal comments because I think we have a limited number and we can just do it our regular way. Is that okay?
Tamara Hickok. Great. So I'm just going to say our general comments, if you want to submit comments to us in writing, if you don't get a chance to speak tonight, or if you don't want to speak tonight, you can submit it to, go to pps.net backslash contact, which will take you to Let's Talk homepage, that you'll find a specific category for comment on the 2024 budget. Link is also found on our PPS Board of Education homepage and you'll also see a sign with QR codes around the room. They look like this. And then when you start your comments tonight, can you state your name and spell your last name and you'll have two minutes to speak and you'll hear a sound after two minutes, which means it's time to wrap up your comments. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Tamara Hickok, last name H.I.C.K., okay, because we're all okay in the end. So I'm speaking on behalf of self-enhancement and want to talk a little bit about our impact that we've had with Portland Public Schools throughout our 40-year-long relationship. And specifically, I want to talk about, one, our graduation rates. We have a chance to maintain a 98% graduation rate currently and for the past three years, we've graduated 100% of our students, even including during COVID. And that number is in comparison to PPS's African-American graduation rate of both 79% for 2022 and 73% for 2023. Another thing I want to point out is also in the past three years, we've awarded $1.5 million in scholarships and that money has been garnered in partnership and leverage of other funds and 80% of that scholarship. And 80% of that scholarship money has been awarded to our Jefferson High School students. Then the last thing I want to mention, excuse me, is being a reliable partner to PPS is that when the strike and the stoppage occurred and we got the call, SEI answered the bell. We were open for those three weeks entirely, serving over 500 meals a day, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Students who experienced food insecurity, home insecurities and all those things, we were open providing services from 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM each day. And that includes transportation, safety with adults, activities and engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hickok?
Yes.
Did you say you were with SEI?
With Self-Enhancement, yes.
Self-Enhancement, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Catherine Tucker.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tucker, T-U-C-K-E-R. I am the teacher librarian at Marysville School, which is a Title I school that serves a homeless shelter and other low-income communities. This year, many of our librarians are having their FTE cut and all of our library assistants are being cut. Other core enrichment teachers are dealing with the same issue. People in K-5 schools are being cut in .2 increments, making it very difficult to fulfill the FTE that is owed to them and potentially causing a shift in benefits coverage. Also, it's challenging to see how the FTE that is owed is going to be given when there is not enough schools in the district to provide a position for everyone. Additionally, oops, hold on, clicked too many buttons. Additionally, when I hear that even though FTE for these positions are being cut, the programs will still be in the schools, I can't imagine how these library, arts and physical education programs are going to function with burnt-out educators who are teaching in multiple buildings. People are being asked to do the same amount of work in a shorter amount of time and in order, in order to sustain their FTE and pay and benefits, have to work at another school, adding on a full caseload of students. And this is not just adding one class to their caseload, but an entire school's population. Because of this, these programs will suffer. As of now, there are art shows, concerts, OBOPB tournaments, book fairs, plays, et cetera. Educators will not have the time or energy for these extra events that take a lot of time and work to plan. The quality of these programs will suffer because there is no time. I have talked to multiple core enrichment teachers about their FTE for next year. Some have been cut by .1, meaning just their planning time is being taken away. Some are expected to teach seven classes in one day, meaning they barely have time to set up between classes and plan. We do not teach the same thing every day to every class. There needs to be time to transition. There needs to be time to plan for multiple grade levels. Some are being cut from .75 to .6, potentially affecting their benefits. If they do not get the .15 placement, they are owed. And I can't even imagine what a .15 placement would even be. Also, you are now adding to the workload for many of my colleagues. Speech-language pathologists, for example, are not only being trained on feeding because that team was being cut, but their caseload size is increasing from up to 1 to 50 students to 1 to 55 students. That's 1 SLP to 55 students. Educators are constantly being asked to do more and more. They are stretched too thin and our students will suffer because of it. I also want to speak to the neighborhood school model because my school is currently utilizing the neighborhood school model. While the program is working for some of our students, it does not work for every student. Some of our students lose instructional time due to room clears and unsafe situations. The students who are utilizing this neighborhood school model spend most of their time out of the classroom and in our learning center, creating one more, creating more work for our learning center teachers. Our gen ed teachers have not been trained in any way to have these students in their classrooms either. One way the program is working is with the help of our paraeducators and mental health professionals. However, due to the cuts, we are losing some of these support staff members, which could lead to our school being in crisis mode as our high-needs students will not be able to have their needs met. I worry that implementing this model in other schools, but not staffing it properly is going to cause a lot of harm. These students need so much support that we will not be able to provide because of these cuts. So I am asking to please take a look at how the budget is being spent and what better choices can be made so that our students can have a better quality of education.
Thank you for providing your comments.
Isabel Johnson.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. Oh, sorry. Isabel Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I appreciate the dedication and service of our volunteer board members and especially our student representative. I recognize we are in challenging financial times and that cuts have to be made for the 24, 25 school year. And I don't think all those cuts can come from central. And maybe nothing can be done, but I am here to talk about how important libraries and library assistants are for our school communities. And in particular, for my son's school, Glencoe Elementary. The title "Library Assistant", .5 FTE, does not do our Ms. Diane justice. Shelving books in the library is one of my favorite volunteer tasks and I see firsthand how much the kids love our library and Ms. Diane. I feel the excitement in the room when they come to check out books. I see the care she takes in talking to the students and giving them suggestions and recommendations. I see the students when they return a late book and Ms. Diane greets them warmly and asks if she has anything on hold for them. I see the families and younger siblings show up every other Wednesday, excited for sibling story time. I see how diverse our collection is for a small elementary school. Our Glencoe Library, and I'm certain this is true for libraries across PPS, is a place of community. Community and a sense of belonging are so important for our students. Students that feel connected to their school's community are far more likely to remain in school. Without our library assistance, libraries across the district will be forced to reduce hours. Our school librarians are incredible, but they cannot do it all. Please try to keep our library assistants. And for more on how integral our library assistants are, please read the Franklin High School, High School Post article on their library assistant, Chris Hamilton. It's really good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ally Tucker.
Hello, my name is Ally Tucker. I'm a paraeducator and this is my second year working for PPS. I was also a student growing up in Portland through PPS. And I'm here to talk about your proposed budget to special education. In your proposed budget, special education is facing devastating cuts to services and teams who are vital to ensure students can still access their education and safety. I'm here to, I'm here to ask you to stop the proposed cuts to special education services such as adaptive PE, feeding teams and assistive techniques. Losing these services would be devastating and I fear my job will, will no longer be functional or sustainable without these services. I am still working for PPS because of these teams and the expertise that they bring. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chantel Waddell.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Chantel Waddell, spelled W-A-D-D-E-L-L. And I am a work for Self-Enhancement as the director of our extended day programs. And I wanted to come and share about how SEI has partnered with the district over 40 years and understand that while schools are important and they do an important work to help our students be successful, we can't do it alone, either one of our entities. And so through the partnership with Self-Enhancement, we have been able to offer many resources to our students. We understand that they come to school with some barriers, many, a variety of different barriers. And so as a community organization with students in the build, or with staff in the building and offering after-school programming and the different resources that we, we bring to the students to try to reduce those barriers so that they can be successful, we're hopeful that through these cuts that are potentially going to impact our work, that they're minimized as much as possible because obviously that will directly impact our ability to help get students cross the finish line as teachers are working to do as well. We have a variety of resources through post-high programming, through after-school programming, in-school programming. We offer rental assistance, energy assistance. We offer exposure opportunities to students. And all of it really is to help them realize their full potential. And we're hopeful, obviously, as you've stated, these cuts represent FTEs and they do with our organization as well. And so in order for our students, and predominantly they're, they're African-American, we're hopeful that this doesn't negatively impact our ability to be able to help support them to become positive contributing community members. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for partnering with our school district and our students.
Trent Aldridge.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Trent Aldridge, A-L-D-R-I-D-G-E. I am the Chief Program Officer at Self-Enhancement, Inc. And just like my partners, I'm a very proud partner with Portland Public Schools. We've been working hand-in-hand to empower and serve the youth in our communities for many, many years. And throughout this successful partnership, SEI has served as an extension of your commitment to our students and community. We've worked in your buildings, in partnership with your district, employees, teachers, administrators and so forth. And as a nonprofit, we truly understand the barriers that come with budgetary concerns. We realize that you guys have to make significant choices and changes here and we recognize that as well. However, we feel that SEI provides an incredible return on investment as it relates to every, every dollar received from our district is $3 that we fundraise, leverage grants and/or other partnerships to provide. And so we feel like any reduction that we might have, we understand, but it would be a greater reduction than just the $1 amount that it would be. So for everyone, it's three. And as we continue to get a difficult circumstances ahead of us, we can think about the state not supporting our district for the summer and the resources there. Every moment we can provide resources to support our communities would make a big, big difference. And so you've heard from Chantel and Tamara about all of the services we provide. And we just want you to know, we're going to be a continued partner. We'll show up when you need us, but just to know that your investment goes much further than the dollar given. So thank you for your time and appreciate it.
Thank you for being here tonight.
That concludes who we have signed up for public testimony.
Thank you for everybody who came this evening to share your point of view and your perspective about the budget. Board members, we've had a couple of meetings where we've had budget information provided. We also have had public testimony. We've received a fair amount of written comment. We also, I know individual board members submitted questions to staff. And I want to just share appreciation to the staff because it was 15 pages, but I know that 15 pages took a lot of staff time to produce information about really critical programs and initiatives in the district that board members had concerns or questions about. So thank you to the staff for turning that around really quickly. And we received all those answers tonight and I'm assuming they'll be posted as, as well. We, tonight, in addition to asking, hearing public comments, also the opportunity for anyone to ask any follow-up questions. They have about the budget presentation or the answers to the questions we got. I don't know if anybody wants to jump in with questions. And I want to make sure Herman, Gary, I'm sorry, Director Green and Chair Hollins. And Frankie, if you have questions, I want to make sure that you flag, raise your hand or flag so that we can let you have an opportunity. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Director Solon.
I was just going to say, I, I really haven't had time to read the answers to our last question. So I, I don't really feel qualified at this point to ask anymore.
I just, I wanted to also thank the staff for putting together this. We have a printed out copy, but on the online version, the links are not working. So if the links could work, some of them do work. I've tested about four of them and some of them we need access. So if that could be corrected, that would be helpful.
We will have that fixed tomorrow.
Just a real quick question. Would it be possible to get the, I'm going to call it 10 years, there's nothing magical about 10 years, 10-year history of the RESJ funding, just essentially the high-level organizations we funded and the amount they've gotten, including the proposed number for 24, 25?
Yes, but the echo is preventing me from hearing what you're saying. Could you say it again, please?
I'll, I'll try and be a little bit, yeah. No, 10-year history of funding for our RESJ partners.
I don't have any questions, Director Brim Edwards. Thank you.
Frankie, do you have any questions?
Not at this moment, no.
Chair Hollins.
Yes, hi. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Well, again, apologize for not being able to be there tonight. My plane got delayed, so I am still sitting in the airport since about six this morning. But with that said, one question is, in the budget, there were, I believe it was unrepresented administration for COLAs and STEPs and a budget amount of around 5.6, 5.7. I don't have it in front of me, so please, please apologize for that. I'm just wondering if we froze those, because everybody's feeling this cut, right? From janitors up to our administration, teachers. If we froze those COLAs and STEPs for next year, could we redistribute that 5.9 million to student-facing positions? That would be one question. My next question, and I don't know how well this will go, but if we were able to freeze COLAs for all of our employees to help with our budget cut, how much would that be? And then my last question is, I appreciate the answers that we received, but the one around the demographics, I appreciate it being disaggregated out among those that will be impacted. I would love to get that as well as percentage of each group. So if I'm looking at 7.9% of African-Americans that could be impacted, what is that percentage out of the total number of African-Americans? If I can get that, that demographic or that breakdown, that would be great. And I think that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Chair Hollins, this is Sandy Husk. Again, I'm, I'm really apologize. Between you being long-distance and the echo in this room, do you mind putting those in writing to me and the board so that I can be real clear on what you're asking?
Absolutely. You'll have it tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Hollins. Director Wong, do you have any questions? Do you want me to ask a couple? I can fill in some space.
We want to just also thank the staff for answering all these. We want to just also thank the staff for answering all these.
So this is a question on the, sort of a follow-up on the special ed, that I ask about all the extensive changes happening and would there be meetings with parents? And it says, the answer to the question says the purpose is, well, there'll be K-5 grade bands who are served in our special education-focused classrooms are receiving personal invitations for our special education parent liaisons will be facilitating the engagements. So if you're a K-5 parent who fits in, you have a child in a focused classroom, you should expect that you'll be getting a personal invitation to a meeting?
Jay will come up to the table.
Yes, yes, so that has been happening, and the engagements actually have been occurring over the last week and a half and will continue for the next two weeks. They're both virtual and in-person, occurring at our high schools. I think the next one scheduled is on Friday at Kellogg.
So some of the questions I got were also from parents of middle grades and high school parents. What are we doing for those parents?
We will do the same thing. They're not scheduled yet, so we will have, most of the changes and service adjustments that we are doing moving forward impact primarily the elementary grades, specifically as we're talking about the neighborhood schools model. But some of the programmatic shifts that we're doing with feeding and adaptive PE, which we will still continue to provide, will also impact middle school, so we will do that, so those will be scheduled. Like, it won't be next week, but it'll be the week after. So we'll be communicating those out in the same manner.
And then just following that, so if you have a student who had received services from someone from the feeding team, regardless of what grade you were in, you'll have, you'll be invited to some sort of meeting about the changes? Okay. Great. And if, for some reason, somebody gets missed, who would they reach out to at the district?
They can connect directly with me, and I'll connect them with folks who are facilitating those, and we'll get them invited. And again, we're doing both virtual and in-person, so trying to make it as convenient as possible.
And then I had another question about the paraeducators staffing, which was sort of a follow-on, that there was also a concern with the changes, that it also was dependent on us making sure that we had paraeducators positions filled. And it's great to see that the district has gone from 70 positions open to, down to 10 to 12, which is great. I don't think I've seen that low of numbers in quite a while, so I'm really happy to see that. It also said that, because I'd also asked about the issue of what your number of fill rate, and it says that the subs are only filled about 35% of the time, and then you're going to hire a flood of pool of paraeducators? Is that, and they're going to be centrally hired, so that essentially they'd have a job, and it may just be, any given day, they'd be told, like, this week you're going to be at this school? Is that how it would work? Instead of being a sub, they actually, the expectation is they come to work every day, it just may be a different place?
That's correct.
Okay. I have more questions, but if you want to go ahead.
Sure. I have, I'd like to know a little bit more about the title schools. It looks like the budgeted amount decreased by an amount this, between this year and next, even though we've expanded the schools from 25 to 36. I'd just like to understand how we got more schools and less funding.
Yes, and so contrary to popular belief, I do come to the podium or come up here. So the state does not fund us based upon how many eligible schools we have. It's based, it's based on a census data information, and the feds actually give us our allocation based on census data. We then take that money that we get, and we identify who our high-poverty students are, and we use direct certification. So we haven't changed the bar, we just have more schools qualifying, and so that amount of money has to go further.
So, excuse me, so more schools qualify by, I mean, additional nine schools or whatever?
Yeah.
Or 11 schools? But there's less money to...
They gave us less money.
They gave us less money?
Yes. They, we were allocated less money at the same time that we had an increase.
An increase in need.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm curious, just to follow on, because I was going to ask a question about that. Is it, are the dollars distributed proportionate to, you're so long, proportionate to, by school, or is it a number of qualifying students in the school?
Can you repeat the first part of the question?
Pardon?
Can you just repeat the first part of the question?
So I'm, so we have this cool of dollars that's smaller and more schools. How is it divided? Is it by a per student, or what's the formula?
So the formula is all of the eligible, the eligible students within the school, so the students who are directly certified, it is a per pupil allocation based upon that.
Great, so if you're any one of those 36 schools, it's just a formula based on your number of students, and we, then you take the total number of students and you get a per pupil number that we divide the 10 million up into?
That's exactly right.
Great. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Frankie, go ahead.
Thank you. So on the answer to the question about library assistant positions, it said that overall, or it said that guaranteed library minutes would stay the same, and I was wondering, like, what the guaranteed library minutes were actually? And I was wondering also, like, how that works at the high school level where there isn't, like, a set aside time to be in the library?
Did you understand the question?
No, I'm sorry, guys, those of you that are online. Frankie, if you want to text it to me, I can read it in the room, or if you want to try saying it again.
Or it looks like Sharon may be able to answer.
Maybe Sharon got it.
If I understood that question correctly, it was, what are the guaranteed number of minutes for library in K-5?
Got it.
That's 45 minutes per week. In high school, there was no change. They don't have library time like you do in elementary school.
Does that answer your question, Frankie?
Yeah, somewhat. I guess, yeah, that does. I just, like, also, so in high schools, like, is there a way to measure impacts? Because, like, obviously, like, there isn't library time, but libraries are still open for certain parts of the day.
Frankie? Margaret Calvert here. Thank you for the question. I want to make sure I'm answering the question you're asking. So I heard it as, what is the impact, is there a way of measuring the impact of libraries and library time? As it, it's not scheduled formally. There are times where there's co-teaching with librarians in high schools, but are, are you, are there, can you give me an example of something you're thinking of in particular, and then?
Well, specifically, like, at the elementary school level, you know how we're able to say, like, there's no impact on the guaranteed minutes? But I was wondering, like, with the change in, like, library positions at the high school level, like, how that works when we don't have guaranteed minutes to, like, measure it against? So, like, is there any way for us to tell what the specific impacts are going to be?
There wasn't a change at the high school level. In staff, like, the overall staffing packages may be there, but the, the actual, there wasn't a specific change in the, at the high school level.
I, I was under the impression that it was all library assistants, or at least, I guess maybe at my school, library assistant is not going to be there.
It shows up slightly differently in the staffing. I think that the, that at the high school, there are, individual schools can make choices based on the number of, a number of factors, but it's not like a specific line in a staffing formula like it is or was with the elementaries.
Okay, thank you.
So it shows up as, it, the language used to be called discretionary support, and that changed, that specific line changed in high school, but there wasn't something that I, that was specific across the board to library assistance.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Director Sullivan.
I'm looking at volume two here of the budget, and I just looked up one high school, and it said, for Lincoln High School, last year, the budget was 1.0 for licensed library, and it's the same this year, but last year, for library media services, it was .6, and this time it's zero. So it looks like it was the assistant that was no longer. Is that correct?
Right. Thank you for the question, Director Sullivan. The allocation to the high school did not change. It is, it is likely that the principal and the leadership team made a change in how they use their discretionary FTE in staffing, and so that would, that would be the reason for that shift and change.
Okay, so not total number, just...
Right. Nothing that we did with our staffing model, but a part of principal discretion and autonomy at the school level.
So a question, doesn't have to be answered tonight, but I'd like it. I asked, had asked a question about the closing of the Head Start, or Head Start Applegate is being relocated, and I asked about the number of students or the number of Head Start slots, and I'm looking for that specific number, and I'm not seeing it here. It talks about funding and grading it, but I'd like to know how many, again, I don't need it tonight, how many students are enrolled in Head Start? And is, and then specifically what the PPS and federal allocation is, the flow-through versus the allocation that's coming from preschool for all? And then a follow-up.
We can, we can do it later, but do you have the answer now?
Oh, yeah, and I don't, it's, so just to follow on, it's a preschool but also a school enrollment question. I'm noting that the, there was another question on Head Start where it talked about program slots going to places where the Head Start had have successful, more fully enrolled programs, and one of the schools that it named was Whitman. And I'm curious whether in the enrollment numbers we see, whether the school enrollment includes the Head Start programming? Because I know Whitman right now is, well, it was very, very low before the Southeast Guiding Coalition, and it's increased. It still looks relatively low, but I also know that if we have several Head Start classrooms, that it's actually a fuller school than, same thing maybe with Lentz and some of the other, Martin Luther King Junior School. So I'm curious about, and it looks like Dr. Adams is up here.
I appreciate the question, Director Brim Edwards. When we look at student enrollment, it's K-12 and not counting our Head Start and pre-K students?
Yeah, and I think, I know that's our main focus. I'm just know, as, as we have conversations about our facilities and them being under-enrolled, and the size of them, and what they're supporting, in the last, since the pandemic and since the start of preschool, all, we've, and we've always had a pretty robust Head Start program. It just would be important for us to maybe have some side thing in addition to the school enrollment, but also show if there's a preschool enrollment, because I know in the past when it's like, oh, we could just move this program here, and it's like, oh, but there's all of these preschool classrooms, so it's not necessarily, it's somewhat deceptive if we don't include those, and like I say, we've got a pretty robust preschool program.
Appreciate that feedback. I'll work with Dan Young as we look at utilization to understand. My understand, my, my understanding at the moment is that we do sort of understand how the building is being utilized, but we don't count them in this form of our official enrollment. But I will double-check that and get that back to you.
Yeah, a good example is Lentz, where they wanted to put the Spanish immersion preschool program, and it looked like actually the Lentz neighborhood students could stay there because there was plenty of room, and then it was like, oh, we're planning to bring in a Spanish DLI preschool, so there's not going to be enough. And so I think before, as we're, as we're thinking about staffing our schools and how we are supporting them and whether schools are under-enrolled, again, I'm not asking you to do anything, I'm just, it would be useful to make sure that we remember that because they are a pretty significant student population, and they have pretty specialized needs, so.
That's a great point, thank you.
You answered my question, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It's Patty? Patty? Okay, well, I'm just going to keep going.
Interesting, interesting time. If we're just putting questions in the record, does it make sense for board members to just submit them?
I might ask Ashley Youngston. So he, this is an equity allocation question, and it may be for Ms. Calvert. The high schools now have a different equity allocation than they did before, and I'm wondering if you could share what that is, because over the last 10 years, we've heard a lot from high schools that didn't get equity funds but still had students who, if they were, enough of them would have received some sort of equity funding, so can you explain how that shifted, and so schools that wouldn't have had in the past, like what they have now? And then, I know it's in writing, but the explanation of why we can't, maybe how much it would cost at the elementary and the middle level, because it sounds like it's a cost factor, which I'm not dismissing, but...
Sure, it is a cost factor. I don't have that exact number for you off the top of my head, Director Brim Edwards. At the high school level, what we were able to do was take our equity allocation, and instead of spreading it, what we realized is that we had an opportunity to help schools support students of color. We had a lot of students of color in our students who are received free and reduced meals by direct certification. And we did some analyses and determined that if we allowed the equity dollars to follow the students who are living in poverty, we would still be supporting minority or underserved students, and all high schools would receive some equity allocation. We would love, I would love to be able to do something like that, K-8, but we would need more funding in order to, in order, I mean, if we spread the K-8 equity out now across all the schools, it wouldn't be a meaningful impact at any one school in terms of what they could do in terms of enhancing their staffing or their support for students.
Great, that's super helpful. If it's not a huge lift, just understand what that would be, and...
Sure.
I'm not going to be proposing, but I think from a longer-term standpoint, I know it, for schools that have, that they don't quite meet their threshold for title funds or the equity formula, they still have students that they need to serve, and it sounds like at the high school level, because it's a smaller universe, we're able to do it, so I'd be interested in...
Sure.
Aspirationally, if, like, you know, we were able to do it, whatever it costs.
Sure, I can, I can talk to the team and see what we might be able to approximate, Director Brim Edwards. Happy to do that.
So it sounds like nobody else has any questions. Is any, is there any comments for the good of the order, or anybody want, Gary, Director, Chair Hollins? Or was that Director Brim?
No, I will, I will send mine in.
And I'm still good.
Go ahead, Director Sullivan.
I think, well, we'll be here next week, right, with CBRC, so it'd be nice, we'll have time to read this one thoroughly, and I think there'll be time for more questions.
So do we have, in the May 7th agenda, do we have time for the discussion of the budget?
Give me just a minute. Yeah, actually, it is a pretty full agenda, I think.
I think we had, we also had another meeting scheduled that we're going to be potentially rescheduling.
It is a very full agenda. We're scheduled...
We're scheduled to end at 9:10. Uh, no, excuse me, second page? I think it would be very challenging to figure out a way to add an item for May 7th. But that, you were asking about May 1st.
This is May 1st.
This is May 1st. It would be very challenging to add time in May 7th.
And I do believe, though, we had some time reserved, I want to say the 13th or the 14th, that we're looking to reschedule.
Well, that was up to board leadership, so.
We have the work session, the CBRC report presentation and board work session on May 7th. And then May 14th has been left open for a board budget work session. So if, if we're, if we're filling the meeting.
Herman, Herman, Herman.
Yeah.
That, that, that's the session that we're looking to change, because key staff members won't be here then. So if we're going to do another, and I'm going to talk with the, I'll talk with each board member, see if they want to either fill another again, either explore or write after that.
Got you, got you.
A couple days, where we can find a spot for everyone.
What Gary, what Chair Hollins is saying is there are four staff members, there are several staff members, but four of us that are pretty heavily involved in the budget process will be in Chicago with the Wallace Foundation team. It's a requirement for the grant, and we will be gone the evenings of the 14th, 15th, and 16th. So if we can find a date, but after the 7th and before the 14th, we would be more than happy to have another budget session.
Also, it's worth noting that, so there is something on the next agenda with the CBRC. I will note that May 21st is the budget approval. And then there also is, it's not, it's not done yet. There's also a budget adoption that, so if there were something, I mean, certainly we want everybody's questions to be answered, but if there were, for example, an amendment, the budget isn't finalized until we have the adoption vote, which is on June, it's mid-June, I think, June 11th. So you have sort of two bites at the apple. One thing I would encourage everybody, if you have a chance, once you have a chance to read all the questions, if you have clarifying things, questions, submit them to staff, it is good to have one last public discussion, have the opportunity. I guess probably Roseanne and Cara will be surveying board members. It is really, so which part? Oh, that Cara and Roseanne will be surveying board members about a potential other board meeting date, if we need one other than the 21st and then the 11th, which, so the first is approval and the second is adoption. Okay, with that, we've concluded our business, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.